I got 5:15. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, June 9th. Where has this year gone? 2022. Time for the 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag. And Councilmember Roger Nastian, who was the alumni. What were you?
Distinguished alumni.
Distinguished alumni for Wenatchee High School last year. He's a good enough speaker. He's going to lead us in the pledge.
All right. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council member. And we have six council members present. I think Linda Harold. Linda, are you on the phone with us tonight? I don't believe she is. I believe she's out of town. So we just have six with us this evening. So for those of you who've been watching city council meetings, we've had to change our format a little bit to allow open public comment prior to taking on our consent items. So this is a time when any member of the public could address the city council on something that's on tonight's agenda or not. Obviously, we have some presentations which we'll take comment on, and we do not have any public hearings. So this would be a time when any member of the audience would wish to address something that's on tonight's agenda or not. We'd ask you to come up, give you three minutes. Name an address for the record. Come on up. Sit down right there. Name an address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kristy Bingham, and I live at 760 Monroe Street, Wenatchee, Washington. I've lived in Wenatchee since December 7th of 1991. I own and operate Children's Gate Montessori School located at 1425 Cherry Street. We have been at this location since 2005. It is a residential zone, therefore, we have a conditional use permit. We have an infant program, a toddler program, and an early childhood program. In April, we pulled all the dead Arbor Vita out along the Lambert Street and replaced the five-foot chain link fence with a six-foot wooden fence. This has allowed us privacy from the street, a barrier from dogs walking, and has stopped the high school students from taking pictures of our children. It has created a safe, secure campus for the children. This fence was a major enhancement to the neighborhood, and thus far, all my neighbors have commented about how much they like the fence. They would like me to finish staining it, and I had to stop. At the beginning of May, I received a warning letter from the Wenatchee Planning Office stating that I either tear down the wood fence, make it a four-foot fence, take every other picket out to give 50% visibility, set it back by 10 feet, or risk fines for this violation. Had I known I could not replace the fence on my own property without producing a violation of a city ordinance, I would not be here today. I do promise in the future I will check the city codes before I make any enhancements to my property. Here is my concern. A four-foot fence would lend itself to allowing pictures to be taken of the children and possibly someone grabbing a child and taking off with them. This would be a nightmare. We are licensed by the state. I'm required to have 75 square feet of play area per child. If I move the fence in five more feet, I would be in violation than my license from the state, and my school could be closed, creating, excuse me, creating an even bigger hole in the education system here in our valley. As you can see, I'm presently caught between a city ordinance and the state wax. It is my understanding that there are many fence issues in our city presently, and granting me a variance may not be possible. However, I believe I have a solution or two. We could amend the fence ordinance to allow schools and childcare centers to have a six-foot wood fence to create a barrier from the street and a safe, secure, healthy environment for children when they are at school. Another possibility would be to allow the four-foot wood fence with a two-foot trellis, thus making the entire unit a six-foot fence. The 50% visibility portion of the ordinance would have to be waived for this setup. I believe that you have pictures of the fence and play area. I marked a four-foot on the fence and then had many of the children stand by the fence. As you can see, my tallest child could probably climb over a four-foot fence. My shortest child could reach up and be pulled over. As the pickets have dried, they have shrunk, and you can see through each one, creating more visibility, but not a 50%. Thank you for your time and attention and listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bingham. And I think, you know, from a process perspective, you know, this will go in front of the code enforcement board, and you're more than willing to have that conversation with them. I'm not sure how far along in this process you are. In terms of, I'll have staff report back to us when that process is over, and staff will talk to council about whether or not they feel like having to look at our fence ordinance again. If we choose to do that, that would go through a planning commission process. I think that would be the appropriate spot for them to look at that and then bring a recommendation back to us. So this may take a bit of time, but I do encourage you to stay involved in the code enforcement process. That is a board of your peers at some point for you to hear from them. And we will continue to monitor this at this level. And at some point, if it works its way back, which it might, we can talk about it then.
Okay, so you want me to go back to the planning office?
Well, have you had a code enforcement board hearing yet?
No.
Okay, so that would be probably the spot. And Glenn, you've got to help me with that. Is that the next spot for her to go? And then if we choose to look at the fence code, it would be a planning commission spot to start with?
It would be planning commission. I just updated it several years ago.
Okay. Yeah. Code enforcement board first. Work your way through that process. We'll monitor it, and if we get a recommendation or some discussion back, we may ask the planning commission to take a look.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you very much for being here. You bet. Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either not on today's agenda or on today's agenda? Seeing no other takers. Our first item on our agenda tonight are our consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda, vouchers, and minutes from our previous meetings.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items. Motion to approve agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Roger Nastian to approve this evening's consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have four presentations tonight. Your agenda only shows three. We're adding the pride proclamation to that. But we will first start with Fire Chief Brian Brett to give us an update on the Shalane County Fire District 1 and Douglas County Fire District 2. RFA, I guess, is the right term. Is that the right term?
Yes, Mayor, that's the right term. Good evening, Mayor and council. Nice to get to come visit with you all. The Board of Fire Commissioners of Douglas County 2 and Shalane County 1 have approved putting the Regional Fire Authority on the ballot August 2nd. And I just wanted to come in and have question and answers with the council members on the why and ask any details. It's basically, in my opinion, two components of questions, generally financial and operational. Speaking to the financial side, the question I am asked often is, well, if you're combining the two fire districts, shouldn't it be cheaper? Because you're asking for more money. It is cheaper when we started off because we're going to have less chiefs, one chief, less deputy chiefs. It is cheaper that we're not going to build redundant facilities. However, we are short firefighters, so we are going to hire six firefighters. Therefore, that's the biggest cost driver in why we're asking for the funding level we're asking. Additionally, both fire districts are just at their point in time budgetarily where we know we need to come back to the voters and refresh our rates. We financial model out for 25 years. We feel real good about our projections over a seven- to 10-year period. We're at the six, next year, we're at the six- and seven-year point, respectively, between the two districts, and it's time for us to refresh our rates. The commissioners at this time just decided, well, let's explore being one and have agreed to be one. A little bit more on the finances aspect of it. The Department of Revenue has us form this in two steps. Because we're forming a new entity, it's two elections for us. As one entity, Shalane 1 can go to the voters and ask for a rate, not to exceed $1.50. That's our statutory limit at a simple majority. And then we could ask for a percent greater than 1% if we wished, all in one ballot measure. And we can't do that as forming the Regional Fire Authority. They said you can form it in one ballot measure, ask for your rate, and be on the 1%. And then you can come back to the public and ask for a rate and a percentage. And our financial models show the best interest for us under current predictions is to start off at the $1.50 and 1% on formation and then come back to the public, ideally in November, so it's fresh in everyone's minds, or the following November. And depending on AV growth, ask for a rate less than $1.50 and ask for a percentage, maybe 6%. Currently, it's 6% is what we're asking for. And our ask at 6% is twofold. One, it keeps up with inflation for us in our expenses and capital improvement and fleet replacement program. And two, it keeps our levy rate from dropping drastically over that seven- to 10-year period because we know we're going to have to come back and ask in that period of time. And the more consistent we keep our rate, the less sticker shock there is when we come back to the public and ask to refresh. Additionally, our fire protection contracts are based on our rate, so as those decline, we're at risk of losing revenue for our exempt parcels that pay us. I just want to take a little tactical pause there on the finance portion of it and field any questions.
So where are you going to have full-time employees working? Obviously, downtown Wenatchee, Sunny Slope. Do you got full-time folks out on the way to Mission Ridge?
Yes.
And then the new station in Douglas County, the other one over off of Baker? And then there's going to be another one fully staffed?
Yes, Rock Island.
Okay.
Currently...
So Rock Island's part of Fire District 2?
Two, yes. Currently, as separate entities, we respond as one entity. And that is even better now than it's ever been. We dropped the boundaries completely, the closest resource, no matter where, goes. So now the busiest fire stations are the Eastmont Street Fire Station and the Squill Chuck Fire Station. We're crossing the bridge all the time, but that's our goal, is to get to everybody within four minutes, at least within six. That's our performance standard. We have four, we can guarantee 14 firefighters. Well, there is 14 firefighters on duty throughout the two combined districts. The National Fire Protection Association standard for one-house fire is 15 firefighters, so we're one short. Firefighting is very, it's laborious, time-sensitive, and you have to recycle rehab crews through the labor to keep everybody safe and effective. By staffing the Rock Island Fire Station, we'll have 16 firefighters on duty guaranteed. But a little bit more on the staffing. National Fire Protection Association standard for staffing a fire engine is four people. The rule is you can't engage in interior structure firefighting without two people outside. Two people can go in, two people can be outside. One person to run the pump, one person to help the hose get around the corners and feed the hose. And if you get in trouble, you have the pump operator and that person that's healing the hose that can assist in rescuing the firefighters. That standard was built because too many, when we changed from natural fuels to synthetic fuels in our homes, hundreds and hundreds of hundreds of firefighters died on interior operations. That's the rule. Washington State gives us an exemption to that rule, that if we have three firefighters on a fire engine, we can show up. And if there's a verified credible, a verified credible witness that says, my grandson's inside, my son's inside, my mother's inside, if we have three people, we can initiate a rescue legally. That is our goal. That is the service delivery model we want. We can't guarantee that even if we pass the Regional Fire Authority, and we don't have it now. We can guarantee two people on fire engines, and we're dependent on our college student program and our volunteers to be that third person. However, staffing the additional station lets us collapse on each other faster so that if we're waiting for another fire engine to arrive to initiate operations more aggressively, we'll have them there much sooner. It gives us a greater standard of coverage throughout the area. So what's happened with our, with the fire district is our call volume has went up 37% over the past five years. The complexity of the incidents has increased in water rescue, rope rescue, over the embankment rescues, you name it. We've met those needs of the community and invested in those programs on budgets we set six and seven years ago. The volunteer numbers, though, have dropped 70% over the last 10 years. And our college student program continues to be pretty viable for us, but we're losing them rapidly because they're getting hired. When we bring a college student on to be our third person, we're asking them for a two-year commitment in our program. We send them through the training and want to retain them for two years. However, they get to get out of their contract with us. If they get hired by a fire department, the purpose of the program is to get people hired. Well, around the state, all the other communities are growing similarly to ours, and their fire departments are hiring people like crazy, and we're losing our people rapidly. So the dependency, having a financial model and business model that's based on free labor, of which both fire districts currently do, is no longer a relevant business model. We just need to change our mindset, and it costs more to provide the service, and the demands for service keep increasing.
Chief, are both the districts, are they rated the same by the Survey and Rating Bureau? Or do we have, how does that, assuming the RFA passes, will there be a new rating assigned?
Yes, I believe it will be beneficial. Currently, Douglas County 2 is a five, and Shalane County 1 is a four. That's the best you can get within your respective fire district. One is the best rating, 10 is the worst. Currently, Rock Island's a nine. However, if we staff the station, there'll be a five. And along that note, the second most common question I'm asked is, well, I live on Eastmont Street by that fire station. What good does it do me to staff a fire station in Rock Island? Well, 300 times a year, the Eastmont Street Fire Station's in Rock Island on car wrecks, cardiacs, and fires. It's nowhere near your home. Not only that, the Squill Chuck Station is in Rock Island, too. And I get the same answer from Sunny Slope residents of what good does it do me to staff Rock Island? Well, if we have a house fire right now, your fire engine from Sunny Slope's in Rock Island, it's not there. This gives us the, the increased unit availability is the best benefit we have by doing this and increasing the service delivery.
But if you had a house fire in Rock Island, you were not setting all of your rigs, right? You're going to move one over here in case something happens there, and one there, and four might go there. You'll...
Depends on the staffing. Ideally, yes, we'll pre-position another resource and hold it in the valley. And then we'll ask our volunteers and off-duty career staff to come in and staff that so we can provide coverage because we have back-to-back calls often. That, yeah, that's, the back-to-back calls really gets us as well. So this will solve that problem, too.
Do you have a name for the new entity, assuming that it passes?
We had to select a name to file the ballot measure, and we chose Wenatchee Valley Fire Department.
Oh, Wenatchee's actually going to be in it.
The name can be modified.
No, it can't.
It's already on the ballot.
It's already on the ballot, it's mandatory.
We had to pick something.
I'm voting for the name.
Yes.
We had looked at the RFA options here 12, 15 years ago, when it was really kind of a new organism, I think. So it's been kicked around.
This goes back to us getting out of the fire business and joining Shalane County Fire District 1. We thought that would be just the start, and at some point, maybe we would combine with Douglas County, although I think the tax rates were quite a bit different. I think those have all sort of evened out quite a bit closer. And then Chief Brett's, of course, been running both sides now for a year and a half or so. So we're, seem to get closer and closer to what would make sense, would be an RFA, so.
Yes, and currently, at the mailing house is a newsletter going out to all of the residents in Douglas County 2, Shalane County 1. It has a balance sheet of both organizations on it and a more elaborate summary than I've given the council tonight on the details. And we'll put it on our website with greater detail.
Is there anything in this ballot that requires a certain percentage of registered voters to vote? Is it just a simple majority? How does the math work?
It is a simple majority of the combined of both sides.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's a percentage of voter turnout.
So, okay, combine both sides.
Combined.
So we could be at 60%, that could be at 48%, but together, we're at 53, and that's enough?
Yes.
Doesn't need a majority of both?
Correct. I feel optimistic about it. Last time Douglas County 2 was on the ballot, they passed at 51%. I'll be at low. However, Shalane 1 and Wenatchee when they combined, that passed at just under 90%. And Shalane 1 passed at 73% last time. We asked to set our levy rate with a 6% increase as well.
So you said Douglas County is at a rating of five right now?
Yes.
Will bringing on six new firefighters help them get down to a four with Wenatchee?
It will, the lowest they can go right now is a five, and most of Rock Island will get that. However, if we become the new entity, we'll have to bring Washington Survey and Rating Bureau back in and reevaluate us because I'm optimistic with the increased staffing, we could all go lower.
And that's a benefit to everybody?
Everybody, yes. We were close, Shalane County 1 is close to being a three. If we could hire, we're a four, just barely. And if we could just hire a few more people, we could probably get to a three because staffing packs that much weight in the process.
Any other questions for Chief Brett? Wish you the best of luck, sir. Would be a pretty cool thing if in eight or nine short years we've managed to combine all of our fire departments. When, I think I was told when I first became mayor, there was no way in hell that was ever going to happen. So that would be pretty cool.
Thanks, Mayor and council.
Good luck, Chief.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you. Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce Tourism Impact Report. We've got Mr. Wilkinson and Jerry Barkley with us tonight, so come on up. A little disappointed you're not in a tie today, this evening. Note that for the record.
Oh, I was like, I have a tie. Doesn't this count as a tie?
I don't know, I didn't see you. Are you wearing a tie?
I'm wearing a tie, I think.
Oh, you have a tie, you kept that, all right.
I brought him up.
All right.
There you go.
I'm joking.
We're going to level out at a three.
Yeah. He's still trying to figure out Wenatchee casual.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for having us to deliver the annual report. I was told by Mike Poyer I had about 45 minutes.
Okay.
So I'll try to take about 42 and give you guys a little break on that. The annual report, I understand, was included in your packet, so you've probably all read this. So this will be very redundant and going over. So I'll go as quickly as I possibly can. DMO, our destination marketing efforts, meet the team, the accomplishments, how we connect, tourism at a glance, hospitality industry reports, the J-Lock reporting, and that's all for Brad. And then public relations, and then what we can expect from us looking forward. So destination, destination marketing organization, and he's just here for eye candy. Don't expect...
I'm going to have a really hard question for you.
Yeah, yeah. Direct all the questions there, I'll just deliver. The destination marketing organization is responsible for promoting a community as an attraction, travel destination, and enhancing its public image as a dynamic place to live and work. Through the impact of travel, they strengthen the economic position and provide the opportunity for people and their community. So the Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce has been delivering on this contract for destination marketing. We started in 2013, this relationship with the city of Wenatchee. And in that process, in 2013, we embarked in a rebranding process. And I don't know if any of you are around for that. I think Mayor Kuntz was around for that. Some of you are around for some of those mini-meetings where we started that. That, yes, We Are Wenatchee. So what came out of that was the words that were the content of our first We Are Wenatchee film. Do you guys remember seeing that? And if you haven't, that is available for you to see. But I just wanted to give you some impact report on that. 472,495 downloads of that video have been done to date in 124 countries. So some of those words were very impactful and really made a difference, I believe, in tourism for those. For the next steps in our rebranding was what did not get accomplished during that time. And that was a brand statement as well as a positioning statement. So I couldn't deliver a branding position to any of the contractors that we work with or to you. And we have now completed that. In 2021, we took the time to finish that final steps. A brand identity incorporates, our brand identity incorporates our values. We're passionate about the beauty of this place and the people. We are driven by delivering hope and promise, and we are powered by intent. As a result of that branding process and completion, a new logo was developed. And what you see in the slide is that new logo. So my opinion on logos, just so you know, has a lot to do with, it doesn't really matter. What's behind a logo really matters. The statement and how you position your brand is more important than necessarily a logo. But we did really like this one and the position of Wenatchee being the heart of Washington, since we are in the center of the state. The meaning behind that, you can see, the mountains, hills, rivers, water, parks, fields, gardens, and lands. Am I, how am I doing on time? 45 yet? No? Okay. So the team that we used, that we use to accomplish our goals includes the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, the Tourism Promotion Area Committee members, our East Wenatchee Events Board, the members of the chamber that are, that work on destination marketing, and then the additional partners. So I've included the 2021 team members on that. Mark Kulis, I think you've been serving the longest since you've been with us since 2013.
Yeah, a long time.
Appreciate that, a long time. I'm super excited about it, in case you didn't know. The successful projects that we completed in 2021 included our strategic planning process. I think you have all received a copy of the strategic plan. If not, I brought some for you. But that was upon the recommendation of Laura, Gloria, to get that completed. We worked with Nova Works out of the Tri-Cities. 13 community members were included in that process, and we came up with our statement of marketing, which includes Wenatchee is the heart of Washington state. Our region is known for its breathtaking natural beauty, focus on innovation, thriving economy, and inviting approach. Our commitment to the collaboration, sharing big dreams, and taking care of one another have carefully built a safe, bountiful travel destination, perfect for wanderlust explorers. So that's what kind of came out of that project. We have accomplished short-term staffing for Visit Wenatchee. And the reason that we're addressing staffing is because in 2020, we lost 1.5 full-time employees. So we're trying to regroup from that advocacy for outdoor recreation. So our accomplishment in that is we worked with Shalane County LTAC and have been able to set aside successfully $500,000 of Shalane County money for infrastructure and outdoor rec for the next three years. So we're very excited about working on that. Four seasons of fresh photography were accomplished during 2021. So we weren't just sitting around. We were getting our foundation set so that when we were ready to launch our programs in 2022 to market, that we had our infrastructure ready. One of the other things that we accomplished was the start of our video campaign, and that was part of our strategic plan, and that was to tell our unique stories. And some of those unique stories include Craig Mitricall of Crayle Sellers, Marisol, some of you might know her, the prolific social media influencer, did a trail, mountain bike trail, trail video for us. I'm going to slow down because I'm going to go way too fast and be done in 10 minutes, and I will be so disappointed in myself. Carlos is a ski instructor at Mission Ridge, so that one got accomplished. Salvador, who owns El Cantorito, if any of you have not seen that one. I should make... that one. I should make these all available to you to see because that one was done almost exclusively in Spanish, and the people that I've shown it to so far that are Hispanic in our community have teared up because it's the first time they've actually felt that they've been represented in their language and our, and our community is embracing the story, their stories as well. So I'm pretty proud of that one. Top did one for us, and his atmosphere video is really good, tells his story. And then Hannah Beaner, some of you know from Shalanda, Douglas Land Trust, just completed one on our hiking trail system as well. So those have been accomplished. We also did our Visit, Capture Wenatchee. So those of you that don't know what capturewenatche.com is, is it is a website that includes video photography from all of our prolific photographers in the area. That is available to anyone who wants to launch a website or do any other marketing of our region, so they are able to buy very affordable photography. All of that money goes back to the photographers, save $5.00 that helps us just manage the website. Our strategic plan was completed, and our new Visit Wenatchee website was launched. So I'll get into the numbers. Website performance, as you can see, was up over 65%, and we'll attribute some of that to the easy mobile-friendly website that we now currently have. Our website page views have gone up 63%, and social media performance up 73% over 2020, and Instagram reach is up over 100%, and that's pretty standard in just what that medium is doing right now. We did gross $44,000 in wine sales in our tasting room at Visitor Center. And Jose, I hope that as you read this, you can understand it better than me, but even in the lessons that I've learned in trying to market to the Latinx community, translation is not quite enough. So I've often come up with these cute little phrases and then had them translated, and it didn't resonate because you can't say, jump in feet first in Spanish and have it resonate, right?
Correct.
Right. So I finally found someone who could help me with my creative and do it in Spanish language. So that is an example of how far we've come in that effort in 2021 as well. Our Tourism Impact at a Glance, this gives you an idea of how much money was directly spent in our media plan. And I don't know if there's any questions on that. Are there any questions, Mike? Any questions there? Nope. Okay. This is a result of our relationship with the TreadMap app, so that's how many downloads came from our direct website. It's on the homepage of our website. The reason that we have it there is because that allows us to do safety messages, our sustainable marketing messages are there, and then people who download those apps are also moved about our community in a way that keeps pressure off of some of those trails that are overpressured. It has also been adopted in the state, I don't know if you guys knew that, and regionally. So the Trails and Lakes Region, which is what we're part of in the state's marketing efforts, it is being built out in the Trails and Lakes Region, and then it will be built out statewide as well. Their relationships and ability to move people about our state has been recognized as something that would be very beneficial to the state as we market it. It's just not the space needle, is it? It's a lot more assets. So we're really proud of that relationship and how that benefited us. Hospitality reporting is typically done on hotel occupancy. So as you can see, compared to 2019, our hotel occupancy is up over 2020, but not quite to the level of 2019, but we're getting very close. This information is available through Smith Travel Research, so if you need to see any of that backup, I can provide that to you. Our hotel average daily rates are up, not quite to the 2019 level, but they're at least at $101.00 now. Our hotel, our hotel revenue per available room is up 46% over last year, but not also quite up to 2019 yet. But I will add as an anecdote that we've opened how many hotels in the last three years. So we've opened four and have two waiting in the wings. So I think what that has done also is provide higher-end options for some of our travelers. So I think that as those hotels increase and we see additional travel coming in our busier summer season, this year we'll increase that as well. The second reporting that we use is J-Lark, and J-Lark is required by the state of Washington for us to report on our travel, our influence in travel. It's done in a very complicated way. So we funded a study, the chamber funded a two-year study on our local travel, and what we did is take 10 events in a two-year period, 10 each year, and then survey those people who traveled and ask them where they stayed, how long did they stay, where did you come from, and we ended up with a result of 46% of our travelers, and these were pack visitors, they were Town Toyota Center visitors, they were here to mountain bike, they were here to hike. So these were travelers here for a variety of different reasons. 46% stay in hotels, 20% stay in vacation rentals, family and friends, camping in second homes. Then there's a Dean Runyon study that estimates our visitors to Shalane County stay 1.9 nights and are a traveling party of 2.5 people. So you take all of that together, put it with our hotel occupancy, and you answer these questions in a very methodically estimated way because these are really hard questions to answer when it comes to tourism. Out of all of the visitors who came, how many people came to your city? We have to answer that question. Number of people who traveled more than 50 miles, we have to give you an answer to that question. Of those people, how many came from another country or state? So those estimated numbers are extrapolated, and Brad and I work really hard on them. And what we can tell you that we reported in 2021, our number of people traveling to our area was up over 2019. So we did have over 5 million people visit our area. We did have over 4 million travel for more than 50 miles outside of our area. We had over one, almost one and a half million people traveled from another country or state. Over 2 million of them stayed overnight in Wenatchee. They were probably staying with you guys, right? Because this is how many people stayed in our hotels, which was one, a little over 1.5 million. So that's what we were able to report as far as activity and statistics in our travel.
So when you look at these numbers, is it Wenatchee area, is it include like Shalane and Leavenworth and other places? I look at 20.5% stay in vacation rentals, and that number seems large to me based on what I know in the metropolitan area.
No, that's only in the Wenatchee.
Okay, thank you.
Wenatchee, MSA, right. No, those numbers would probably be a lot higher if we, if we included.
That's as I couldn't, I just didn't realize there was that many. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot. And actually, that number, 15% of all of those J-Lark numbers is actually attributed to East Wenatchee. So you have to take some of that, 15% of those totals really is attributed to that, to Wenatchee. But I did have a very interesting conversation anecdotally with someone who's running a vacation rental in East Wenatchee. And I don't know if any of you have had this, but I've had a lot of people who visit us end up staying in Fancher Heights area. So Douglas County is less restrictive, so there's a lot more people turning their homes into vacation rentals in that area. Our public relations efforts in 2021, although we didn't, weren't really confident in putting a lot of call-to-action advertising out there, we focused on the Rocky Reach Discovery Center, Omni Gardens, the wildfire messaging. Was that me?
No, keep going.
Out of Sunny Slope, and then Mission Ridge, their new lift installation, and then trail expansion. We have over, I think Travis can talk to you about that, but our region being designated as the Trails and Lakes Region now offers more, higher trail system than anywhere else in the state. So that's what they focused on. Public relations is actually the bridge between your marketing and media. So it allows you to influence people's visits by influencing them with travel writers writing independent articles or podcasters visiting and then talking about you, and they're not necessarily getting paid to do that. They're creating relationships. So we've re-energized, refocused, and re-engaged with the community as far as our efforts in 2021. 2013, we talked already about that rebranding effort. We did in 2020, take a Destination Marketing voluntary $100,000 decrease in our budget because clearly we're not inviting people to the area, nor did we feel confident to do that. We're just starting to get back out of that. We lost 1,500 hospitality jobs in 2020 and are also starting to replace those. And those hotels are starting to get a lot of interest in applications, so I'm really excited about that. We may even get the Coast Wenatchee Restaurant open again this year. Harder to come back, of course, are those indoor venues such as the Town Toyota Center, the Convention Center, the museum, and performing arts. So we're going to continue to support them as we move forward. We have 2022 goals, include 60% occupancy in 2022, and we're well on our way to that. I won't really elaborate on any of these. Suffice it to say, we do have goals in 2020, and it's June. So we are close to 50, over 50% of those have already been accomplished. And in your packet, you'll see information about where we would like to go in 2023, but I can see that you've got less time and more people waiting to talk to you, so I'm going to kind of speed it up a little bit here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Clearly, I'm very passionate about what I do and the committees that I work with, and there's your logo in Spanish.
Can you, was it an interactive app that you have? You were talking about some app or something?
In regard to the TreadMap app?
Yes.
Yes, it's interactive. Have you downloaded it?
No.
It's on the homepage of visitwenatche.org, and you can download it from there. You can find safety messages, you can find trail closures in there. Let's say there was a downed power pole at Horse Lake, that would be immediately posted. Let's say there were health concerns or fire concerns in any of your trails, those, that information is posted.
Does it show like colors, like if there's more people there or not?
They can post real-time. Travis is really good at answering questions about this too, but in regard to trail pressure, it will tell you if a parking lot's full or there's no parking. People can voluntarily post information to that site real-time too, so they could take a picture and say, hey, don't come up here, it's packed. And it can suggest a different trail for you that is the same level of difficulty.
And where would we go for the videos if we didn't see them all?
The commercial videos?
Yes.
I will send each of you those because I don't have them on the website for public consumption.
We would just want to see Tops.
I know, I know.
No, actually, we want to see them all.
All of our advertising is done outside the area, so I realize what a void that has created in our community for you to see them, but I want you to be equally as proud of them because they are our stories, and that was what came out of the strategic plan, is please tell our stories so that people can get to know our community. Another place that I'll put them is the WeAreWenatche.com website. That's where the We Are Wenatche videos are, and any of the films that we've done with Charlie are also posted on there. So I will download there because that's where our stories are going to be living. I appreciate your time so much.
Steve, quickly, how's your first couple of months been?
Yeah, I'm in my third month, so it's going very well. Thank you. Yeah, it's learning a lot. I will say, I admire Jerry, what she's done for the city of Wenatchee and just the work. Not aware of it, but I get a lot of great comments about her from other DMOs, other people that are in her position, and how highly she's thought of. So I'm very thankful for her because this is a very competitive market. When Shalane PUD, they had somebody come in, just a developer to look at the development here, and said, have you ever been to Wenatchee? He says, no, I just go to Leavenworth, or I just kind of went up north and went to Shalane. And this was his first time in Wenatchee. He really enjoyed his two nights in Wenatchee. And I was thinking about one of the comments, and it's in the strategic plan, right, is that trying to enhance the experience, visitor experience, where we're open on Sundays, that we're open longer hours. Because I remember him saying this, I wish, you know, there was a little more opportunities in the evenings and on the weekends because I want to bring my family over here on Sunday. And I remember you making that comment there. And so it was very competitive out there, especially when you have Leavenworth and you have City of, City of Shalane. So just very, very proud of what City is doing and really appreciate, Mike. Mike, you've helped me and just listening to what your needs are.
No one likes Mike, by the way. You really don't have to, you don't really have to say nice things about him. We're, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Collect the money tonight.
Yeah, yeah. It's a great experience, and I'm into, I'm kind of into strategy, so I was so glad there was a strategy that was created by 13 entities with the, with the chamber back in 2021, including the city of Wenatchee, that came up with that strategic plan. So we're only in our second year before your strategic plan at this time, and it's going, being successful. It was a little bit of a hiccup there, you know, in '21 there, but we're moving forward. TPA meetings that we're at, we're really seeing those numbers in the hotels, and hotels, the issue that they're having is staffing, is getting staffing. It's not visitors, it's staffing available, so the room available. That's their challenge.
We're seeing good numbers, I think, and I think anecdotally, we'll see that, you know, the March numbers were, I think April may be going to be equally as good. And I see tons of, all the visitors I see have bikes on the back of their cars, so there's a lot of outdoor rec, tread, trail stuff going on, and then some sporting events taking place. And so you can start to see the momentum building here.
Yeah, and you know that proposal that they had for Shalane PUD, there was that hotel boutique hotel? And I remember talking to that gentleman, and he was saying, we think a hotel boutique hotel is needed here. And I remember in that meeting that we're having, the Shalane PUD said, we have people that visit us, and they want a high-end hotel, we put them in a van, send them up to Leavenworth. So there's a need for a boutique hotel, a high-end, and that's just one example that they're saying. But there's really people outside of here in that industry are saying, there's a demand for that here. So that's, that's great to see.
Any questions for Steve or Jerry? Thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
All right. So our next presentation, I received a phone call a week or so ago, and there's been a group of downtown business owners that have been, come together to work about, talking about how to make downtown better, whether it's some sort of streetscapes or other sorts of things. So I know Bart and Todd Keys and Rory Turner and Cam, and I don't know who's going to come up, and I know you got a little spread there, some video or some PowerPoint for us, so come on up, group, and talk on up, yeah.
Did you bring beer?
Yeah.
Blame it on Mike.
Well, thank you. Those of you who know me, if something runs through my mind, it's difficult for Bart to put it aside. I was listening to the fire department discussion, and I went to the second item of recommendation from the Sustainability Committee on the fire department, and it says, combine Wenatchee Fire Department, Shalane Fire District One, estimated safe, but said, this should be the first step in developing fully regional fire services that ultimately include parts of Douglas County. It was really satisfying to sit there and hear the discussions that were taking place.
Took us 10 years to get there, but we got there.
Well, ultimately, it wasn't, anyway, thank you. Good stuff. Thank you for providing this opportunity to share our thoughts, and thanks for providing the time, expertise, and thoughtful leadership that you've all provided us. Maybe later I can explain more what's in my mind, but it's just amazing to be setting where we're setting today. We are here to discuss the opportunities and risks coming to the downtown area. From near bankruptcy to our current status is very impressive, but we need to approach this next phase thoughtfully as it presents many opportunities as well as challenges. Rory will present data and information that underlies our thoughts. Todd will then discuss the first possible steps to get a contributory process and organization, something that will move all of this forward. And then finally, we must emphasize what an opportunity this presents where we are presently today, but also a huge risk without meaningful things taking place. There can be many things, a lot of it. And to me, an important part of all of this is it not only impacts downtown Wenatchee, but it's our city, county, and the region. We're all living in this together. So with that, I'd like to have Rory lead us through some exhibits that they put together, some sheets that talk more in detail about what's in back of what I just talked about.
Perfect. Go ahead, Rory.
Okay, thanks.
Arrows?
Okay. So we got together and began to talk about what's happening in the next three to five years, and we basically couldn't really believe it. And we put it all down on paper, and then we started adding up the numbers, and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty substantial. What's unique is that we are able, this is almost a crystal ball thing. We are looking at these, all of these designs, all of these things that are coming down the road to us, and we're getting a vision of what this future is going to look like here in this small, little community. Within three to five years, Within three to five years, we're looking at about $300 million in new construction and renovation. You know, the question is, you know, are we ready? Here's the thing, it's an eight block compressed area from Kidata Street to Fifth Street, from Mission Street to the river. 300 million invested in that, in that, in that small, little area. So I'm going to go through this kind of quickly here. I'm going to go with the residential projects first. You all know this one. You know, tip the hat to you guys for putting this really creative deal together. That is over the Firestone Lot with Mr. Widener. Pretty cool deal, really, again, very, very creative. I threw this slide in here for the Housing Summit this last week because some people don't know what podium style construction is. And concrete down below, a couple of floors of parking, and then wood frame up above. This style of construction is all over Seattle, Portland, Tacoma, everywhere that are urban areas where where ground is expensive. You have to have the density. It's more expensive to build, maybe 50,000 a unit. So it hasn't hit here yet, but that's the next thing that's going to come here. And you guys are certainly a part of that success.
And that's the Widener projects at five over two. It's that exact demographic.
So 235 units. I've got, I calculated, he's got about two and a half million into the deal already with the acquisition of the buildings and the 400,000 to the city. Again, podium style, five over two, I don't know, at least 40 to 50 million on that and three to 400 occupants at market rates. This is the Riverfront Village project. This is under construction right now. This is what the images are. I know you've seen all this, that the impact here is when you see it all together and you just, you walk away going, my God, where are we going with all this? Okay, so this is five buildings, 454 units. He's under construction right now. This is garden style, five floors ground up, 70, probably million in estimated construction cost and six to 700 occupants at market rates. Let's go through some civic and nonprofit stuff that's going on. The Y, everybody knows that. They're going to end up on that PUD site. They're also going to vacate their current site, which we need to keep our eyes on that. 20 to 25 million in scope. Got the Riverfront Park. You guys are involved in this. I don't want to go spend time on this. But one thing that I think is really cool is how interactive this is. So great job working with the PUD. This feels very welcoming to me. And you're not just walking by looking at it, you're, you're involved in it. This is a cool one. Full disclosure, my wife is the interim executive director there. But I think this is really cool. The, the configuration of this concept takes the entrance from a questionable point of entry on Mission Street to a very welcoming sort of a sky bridge on the park side. If you can combine the park and this, and it just seems like it's a home run if we could do that. And Widener's got to be interested in. This is Widener's front door. And I, I mean, I think he's probably concerned a little bit about the park. This has a really good feel to it, and I think it's needed. So, and I think I want to thank on behalf of wife and the, and my wife and the museum, the commitment that the city has for them. This is your deal. I, I think I'm low on this estimated cost. I don't know how far you're going to take this. Much needed, love to get.
Probably 13 to 15 million would be my guess.
All right, let me get the correction on this right now. You know, that Fountain Plaza is such a cool venue now. We got to get that to ADA. So thanks for staying ahead of this. I'm going to spend just a little more time with these mixed use developments. This is one of the images of the Fifth Street campus. This is where you kind of sit back and go, wow, you know, wow, look at this, you know? This is one of the images that the original Collins Warman report came out with. The city, the port, and the PUD all contributed $75,000. And these guys put together a very, very data driven report. But this is something that just is so stunning. I, I spoke at a Housing Summit the other, or last week. And at this slide, I just said, okay, we're at the Y and Road here. And one, one way goes to downtown Boise, the look at downtown Boise is, and the other one is the look that downtown Yakima. No offense to any Yakam, Yakamonians here, but Boise is pretty cool. I've been looking at a lot of slides from there. So we really do have a choice here how we step forward. And it's a seminal moment in this, in this community that we need to, to really recognize. I threw this in today because I wanted to, I wanted to remind everyone that one thing that, a couple of things that came out of the Collins Warman report. The quote is, the market analysis shows immediate need for additional downtown housing and an absorption rate of approximately 200 units a year. 200 units a year. And this was written in, we hired them in 2019, I think the report was 2020. 200 units a year. So if you took Riverfront Village and the Majestic, the total is 689. And it's going to take three to four years to build those. We're going to be right back where we are three to four years from now. And we're looking at these massive buildings. So I mean, this is how fast we're growing. That's the impact of that. The other thing is that talking to my colleagues and Kirk Dosser at Civic Appraisal, we estimate 10 to 15,000 square feet of office space every year is absorbed in downtown. That's a little generous, I think, but that's about what it is. So there's 150,000 square feet of office space at the PUD headquarters. What we have to be careful of is not dumping that on the market and creating a 10 year supply because that's going to, that, that will do damage to, to the market. And got to drop a little heads up for workforce housing. We've got to do some reuse stuff moving forward. Okay, the last one here is lineage. We all know lineage. This one, I don't know if this, you know, I don't know if this is going to go or not. I, I hope it does. Flint shared with us that he has over $700,000 invested in this project right now, out of pocket. I know his, his date has passed, but I think there's still a good chance that this thing's going to come together or some version of it. You've seen these images before, but across the street from that is Columbia Street and the lineage on South Columbia. And this, I love these images. This is Pearl Street, Portland. This is just so cool. You know, there's a raised platform there because all those brick buildings have, you know, the grade level is three feet above the road level because railroad cars came in and it was even with that. So these raised platforms, it again, just reminds me so much of, of Pearl Street down in Portland. But the one thing that I, I think we need to talk about in moving forward, and we'll get, we'll get a little bit into that, but is, you take Columbia Street, there's no contiguous sidewalk down there. There's no lighting. And here, we're, we're going to do all this work and we're going to connect the downtown and 1,000 or 1,500 new residents. And we want to be able to, you know, move them through the community. These are the things that we are concerned about. And we, 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 we want to work with you to help solve these things. We're not, we're not complaining. We just want to work with you. This is the courtyard inside lineage. You've probably seen these images as well. I mean, this is, I mean, you know, people come to visit, you don't want to take them down here. Those are garage door, roll up garage doors. Those are stairs that go up to the top level. And in this design, there's, these are live work, you know, opportunities. So this is very rapid delivery of this. I apologize, but I didn't want to take my full 45 minutes so, because Jerry took so much time. So, so 300 million invested, 1,500 new, new residents downtown, new art, cultural restaurant venues, new entertainment and tourism options. But we got challenges, right? We got a lot of stuff going on. We, and I know probably everyone's sitting on, I've sat on that side of those desks. And my, you know, my thought is, how the hell are we going to pay for all this, you know? So, so this slide talks about a lot of different things. It talks about local improvement district because I think the building owners need to have skin in the game. I think the culture of downtown Wenatchee has changed a lot. We've had a couple failed LIDs over the past 10 or 15 years. I think that changed about five years ago when the, the culture began to change. The top one on this list is tax increment financing. We believe this is a very achievable option. There's a pilot project going on Tri-Cities right now where new, new construction was included. So I'm not going to get into the weeds on any of these, but we're, we've come here tonight to try to raise awareness and provide some solutions and tell you that we want to be part of this process and that we think at this point, this is one of the best opportunities that we've seen in a lot of years. So we see in the future, it's a watershed moment. You know, are we ready to write the chapter, you know, the next chapter in our story? And if we are, we need visionary, proactive, public and private sector leadership to succeed. I think the word proactive here is the, the key word for tonight is we've got to stay ahead of this. If we could patchwork this together, we could do one and then another and another, and it's going to be painful. So the, so trying to, you know, compress this into a shorter period of time and a more comprehensive development, I think, is what we've talked about favoring. So that, that is end of my stuff. And now the next step.
Thanks, Rory. Pretty impressive images and, and story of what's, what's coming down the pipe. And so I guess first, we wanted to offer our support as a group of people in downtown that care about what's going on to help the process wherever we could. And some of the ideas are the idea that we, we would like to advance if it's suits the council and suits the mayor would be over the next couple of weeks to, next two weeks, have, have the three of us and Mayor Kuntz, if it pleases him, to, to work together to build a five to seven person committee and come back to the group with this five to seven person committee to help kind of frame a plan of how, how we might move forward collectively from a private, public, private group to, to tackle this opportunity and, and manage this, this challenge. And ideally, in my mind, that group would target an update to some of the great studies that have been done to date by the city of Wenatchee on sort of what a downtown, a new downtown with all of these variables and factors and money coming in might look like from the 13 different lenses you might have to look at it and to come up with a plan. And that, that committee would work on an RFP, and we would get it out to smarter people than us who can come in and say, these are some ideas of the great things that could be accomplished. And then from that, we can then begin to drive an, an action plan. So, so I'd really like to, to, to challenge us all to, to build that committee over the next couple of weeks, come back to the council in two weeks and say, this is where we're at. This is the committee we'd like to set up. This is how we'd like to move forward and, and, and charge ahead. So that's the ask tonight is to see if we have a willingness to support that process. Where it goes is anybody's question. We can tell where it certainly will go if we do nothing. It will go with these various independent projects that may or may not be synced together as beautifully as they could. And we have so much capital coming into the valley that we have an opportunity to improve a lot of the challenges that, that our city is having to sort of wrestle with without adequate funding. So a lot of neat things going on, and we, we would be thrilled if we could get the council to support our energy and enthusiasm and Mayor Kuntz to, to tolerate a couple of meetings with us.
So let's, we back up one slide.
And obviously, to the extent that you have other ideas that supplement what we're doing, we're open to that.
One more side back.
Just saying this is.
There you go. Yeah, so I, I'm more willing to meet with you guys. And I think from the, I won't speak for the council, but obviously, we've talked a little bit about, there's a ton going on in our downtown, and this is a great opportunity for us to look at. You know, we've again, had some LIDs, didn't quite work out, right? We've had some thoughts on what landscaping might look like and other things. But this is a way bigger, because this starts at, you know, just the North Wenatchee Avenue and redoes Wenatchee Avenue to make that part look like downtown. There's some probably underpass work that needs to get done. There's clearly work on Columbia Street. I mean, if you were to ask me priorities to, I'd say between Fifth and Second Street on Wenatchee Avenue and then Columbia Street in its entirety, right? Hugely beneficial to our region to, to update both of those. And then the rest of the stuff that happens downtown, to me, follows there. We did get all this stuff from Pasco on tax increment financing. I think we're in the process of trying to put a district map together that pretty closely follows what you guys are looking at, and obviously, starting around Fifth Street, probably down to the railroad tracks or the water and then up, whether we get to the one ways or not and down and cut across, you know, set up a district that sort of fits where you guys are looking at, right? And we think based on the new revenue models that there could be some significant money from the TIP district that we could have for a long, long time and use to help spur downtown development. I think there's going to have to be some form LID based on that amount of money we're talking about and contributions from others like you guys at Port and, and City. And we're more than willing to contribute. You know, this is our downtown, and you guys have all heard me say this a million times, you know? That downtown is super cool, and the more we can do to make it be a center part of our region, the better off we're going to be as, as people are coming here. We saw that with our friends from the Chamber. So I'm more than willing to work with you guys. What, what gets tough for us a little bit is, you know, how full is our plate? And, you know, we've got, I don't know if Rob is still here, but you know, we're short two engineers and lost another one. And we've got all these projects we're trying to do and can't hire an engineer to help us, right? And so, not that we need engineering here, but we, we're going to need some professional folks to just make sure we have the right bandwidth. But I think the timing is impeccably important because I think all of those things are going to happen, right? There's none of those events. We do have to meet with Mr. Widener. You know, he has some timeframes that are imminent here in the next little bit. So we are reached out to Mr. Widener's team, and we'll be meeting with them in the next couple of weeks as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So there is a lot going on. I think most of the stuff that Port's talking about is probably going to happen. I'm shocked that the lineage apartments are going. I never thought that project was going to get where it got, just to be honest. I just, and so that says something about our downtown. That says something about that level of commitment that's taking place by outside investors in, in our downtown. And the quality of the folks that are looking at the Fifth Street property. I mean, if you research some of those names, I mean, that's pretty impressive. That's LA Live and downtown Los Angeles stuff, right? I mean, think about those people saying, I want to look at Wenatchee, right? So there is, you guys are right on, there is so much. I just got to figure out how to wrap around it. Who are the people? And then is there a consultant that does it? Is there city staff that does? I mean, Laura's done a ton of work around the edges and all of this stuff. But also, I'm worried about her bandwidth because she's got NEPA and, you know, so I'm just trying to, but I, I think we're on the right spot. We just got to figure out how to get our hands around it. I'm okay with a little bit of city money sort of leading the way as long as it gets to a point where we can go, okay. Because, you know, what I don't know is all the work that's been done. Is there stuff on Columbia Street that's been done? Any preliminary work?
There's some older, probably 20 year old documents that show what the landscape could look like. I anticipate it's still fairly similar. It talks about that sort of walkable pedestrian area, preserving some of the parking, doing varied sidewalk lengths depending on what's there, just because the width of the street is a little bit more narrow. But, but yeah, you know, they are older documents, but I think still relevant in the fact of, of kind of the types of things that we'd like to see.
Is there a company that you hire to help do these sorts of things?
In 2007, the Downtown Association and the city combined to do a visionary report by the firm called The Makers. They, and I read that again recently, and I just went, I was, it blew my mind because it broke it down into districts, the theater district.
Right.
And it broke it down into the waterfront district before there was a waterfront district.
The reason we have a waterfront district because of.
Yeah, yeah. And then they, and then they, and they bumped it to Fifth Street and bumped it to Kidata Street. So that was spot, excuse me for interrupting.
No, no.
But, but I mean, I think you, we'll get you a copy of that. You don't already have that. And it's like, wow. So I mean, I'd love to, I think we'd love to come and talk to those guys and say, update this for us, you know, what, you know, I've actually reached out to them. They, I don't have a city in my name, and I, and so they're not really jumping.
You mean, your checkbook's not as big as the city's?
Yeah, no.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, but no thanks. But I think that may be the first step. And then, because that, I mean, you have to craft how, as you guys know, how you, what you're looking for in that. But if we can get that going, that puts us way ahead. That, that wakes up everybody and starts to say, what's the strengths and weaknesses now that we're facing that we didn't face 15 years ago?
Yeah. See, and I'm with that entirely, but stay flexible and adjust. But also, we need this done, so we need to figure out how to make it happen.
Yeah.
If we're short of people, we can't accept that. We've got to come up with a vision and a goal. I have to have this 2007 report, it's interesting, just the table contents, vision, goals, and objectives, downtown development concept, recommendation for development sites, and it goes into historic car, all the different northern, you know, I mean. So maybe it is, I'm not suggesting that, but that's the kind of stuff we've got to look at. We've got to overcome the shortage of help somehow.
Well, we have to, because the timing's here, right?
Yeah. When we talked about this at the summit, I apologized to the five or six staff members for the city. I said, this isn't about putting more on your table. We don't, we don't need to do that, but we got to solve this, and, you know, whatever it takes. And I think, I think our group is here tonight to say, we're not just throwing this at you guys and saying, fix it for us. We're here to help. And if it's time, or whatever it takes, we want to help, and we see the vision, we see the future, and we're really happy that we have this group of people sitting here that recognizes that now's the time to do this.
Okay. Let's be in touch next week. Council members, any questions for the group? Sort of interesting to see it all on one set of maps, isn't it?
Honestly, I'm a little more enthusiastic, being a survivor of the last attempt downtown that we expended a lot of city time and effort on, and basically, we're told that cities' taxpayers get to do everything, and that whole thing just crashed. And I'm more optimistic that, because it's not going to happen just with the city. It takes the property owners, and some of them were just not...
I think there's a different feeling and culture, I really do believe that. It's been amazing, I haven't been involved nearly as much of the time and energy that they've put in, but it's been amazing that additional people have come and said, we will support you, we're behind you, let's go. We could put together a big list if that were one of our requirements and things that would help.
Welcome to hear from you at some point in time about lessons learned, your experience in that.
The other thing about this, though, that's going to be helpful, it's big enough, and you have, the Port owns quite a bit of property.
Absolutely.
And the Port, this checkbook is decent, and Link owns property, and their checkbook is decent. Our checkbook's okay right now, and so you actually have enough sort of seed folks that, between that and a TIF, maybe you can really do some pretty amazing things and leave our downtown. If you think 2007, so that's what, 15 years ago? Think of our downtown 15 years from now. And it's our job to try to figure out how to make it so you go, wow, remember 15 years ago, and none of this stuff was here, and...
And 25% of it is already like on the table happening, right?
Yes, yeah. And with that huge residential component, which is only going to grow, right?
Yeah. And you take the PUD, and you go from public property, non-tax, to all private property, built up $150 million, and you start with that.
And you start with Widener, another 50 on top of that, and that's not...
Yeah. And so that whole, I mean, the key is there. I mean, I know it's complex, but we can get there.
Yeah. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So how do we, do we...
So we'll be in touch. Yeah, yeah. We'll be in touch, and we'll get a meeting together, and at least have me and Laura in it, and we'll ask if one of the council members wants to join that sort of discussion, and then that'll get the council involved, me, Laura, you three, and we'll, and we'll get to work on it. Okay.
I'm going to just close by saying, it's, this is so exciting to me. We're faced, not faced, we're given the opportunity to truly make Wenatchee a, it's a special place by heart already, but I mean, a place where you like to go downtown and wander around, you like to do this and do that, and it's really, it'll affect our region. It isn't, it isn't just that we're changing downtown either. We're changing how I feel about our city, how we fit in together with all the other areas around it and stuff. So to me, it's really, really exciting that we're at this point. Wonderful opportunity ahead of us.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, so let's do this. We have one proclamation that didn't make it on today's agenda regarding Pride Month on Councilmember Kulos. Do you want to read that into record? Do you have that? And then we'll take a quick break after that. Okay.
Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBT rights movement, and whereas every individual is equal before and under the law and has the right to equal protection and equal benefit of the law without discrimination based on race, national, or ethnic origin, color, religion, sex, age, or mental or physical disability, and whereas the long and ongoing struggle to transgender, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and other sexual minorities for basic civil and human rights continues to provide inspiration to all, and whereas Wenatchee celebrates the history and diversity of our city's lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community and promotes a society in which all residents can live free from discrimination, and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to celebrate this harmony in which we coexist, now therefore I, Frank J. Kuntz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the City of Wenatchee, and encourage everyone to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respect the rights of all people, and to celebrate the great diversity of our city. And witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this ninth day of June 2022. Frank J. Kuntz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulos, and we'll make sure we get that to our friends at the...
I'll take it.
You'll get it, too? Perfect. All right, so let's do this. That was a little longer start for our meeting than normal, so let's take a quick little five-minute break, and we'll reconvene. Thank you. We're over time for city staff. All right, everybody, welcome back to Wenatchee City Council. First item on our action items is regarding an appointment to the Parks Arts Recreation Commission. So, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. My presentation should only take 45 minutes, I hear that's how long we've been granted.
That's what Mark's been doing. Councilmember Poyer's been giving away 40 minutes.
No, we have a vacancy in the Arts Rec and Park Commission, so we're requesting approval of Resolution 2022-19, which would appoint Darcy Mariota to position four of the Arts Rec and Park Commission. That's got a term expiration date of December 31 of 2023.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve Resolution Number 2022-19, appointing Darcy Mariota to position four of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to adopt Resolution 2022-19, appointing Darcy Mariota to position four of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Burdick, updated wooey code.
Wooey.
Where'd that yawn come from?
I am, it's been one of those weeks, Steve. Hopefully, this is good news. I'm trying to keep a sense of humor about it.
With Burdick building a fire official. You know, as, we're always looking at ways to improve our codes, and recently, I was looking at the proposed Washington State Wildland Urban Interface Code that probably will most likely go into effect in July 2023, and it's like, some of what they're proposing to change, and we're looking at, how can we change and do some improvements to our code? So we did that, looked at some other jurisdictions, one that has adopted a wildland urban interface code similar to ours, one that is actually trying to adopt, one that is, they're both based on our code, both of those were. And so we came up with about four amendments that we think help improve our code, actually lessen the cost of complying with wildland urban interface, pretty minor. One is just remove an requirement for 20-minute rated doors, for exterior doors. One is due to cost of a 20-minute rated door. To really have a true 20-minute rated door, you know, the door to your, from your garage to your house that slams shut every time you go through it, that is a 20-minute rated door. Your door would have to have spring hinges on your entry door to truly meet the 20-minute requirement. 20-minute rated doors typically don't have big windows. A lot of entry doors have large windows. So sliding glass doors, you can get by a 20-minute, and that would be feasible. It's probably be $10,000 to buy a 20-minute rated sliding glass door, because it would be fire-rated glass. So we removed that, and we also, this is a state amendment that revises the definition of heavy timber construction in the wildland urban interface, nowhere else, which is called type four construction. And it reduces the size of columns, beams, roof beams, and floor beams by a little bit. The reason we have heavy timber and allow heavy timber in the wildland urban interface is it doesn't burn real quickly. It starts to burn, it chars, and it takes longer to get into that inner core, that structural portion of the wood, and that's why heavy timber is allowed. We added an allowance to, there's materials that are now being tested to have ignition resistance. And so now we have added that for exterior walls. If you can, you have to send them out to get tested by approved agency, but there are materials that people are now building, and as more jurisdictions adopt the wildland urban interface code, we'll probably see more materials go through that testing.
Okay.
And we just revised the fence requirement to align more with other jurisdictions or neighboring jurisdictions, is to say that wood fences that go up to within four feet of the residence would have to be non-combustible. We found out, reading some literature about the vinyl fences, they mostly just sag and melt and go to the ground. They don't really burn or add to the burning. And with our defensible space requirements, we shouldn't have that issue too much.
Right.
Anyway, so that's the extent of it. Looking down the road, as the state gets ready to adopt the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, we're probably going to have to go to the state Building Code Council, because we have the ability to amend Chapter One of the building codes, and we don't have the authority to amend the other chapters of our codes, including the wildland urban interface if the state adopts it. So they're probably going to make us go, and actually, they would have to approve our code.
So ultimately, they'll have to approve these changes as well?
They wouldn't approve these changes. We would have to submit our code to them. They would review it, say, does it meet what the intent of their code is? I think ours is much more simpler than the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, because we doesn't, we typically have a shrub environment.
Right.
That, the Wildland Urban Interface Code is, it's forest, by environments, all the other environments included in that one, so.
Good.
And that's it? Any questions?
Any questions for Cliff? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2022-09, adopting amendments to the Wenatchee City Code 3.36 Wildland Urban Interface Standards.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Kulos, to adopt ordinance number 2022-09, adopting amendments to Wenatchee City Code 3.36 regarding wildland urban interface standards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Brad, budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Brad Posey, Jack Finance Director. Back in November of last year, the council adopted the 2022 budget as required by law. Since then, there have been many things that have come up, many projects and needs that were unanticipated in the 2022 budget process. Many, all of these have been reviewed by Finance Committee and have been tentatively approved, and so now we come to council to formally adopt them. We do this twice a year. We've got our first half budget adjustments now, and then we will, I believe in October or November, in fall, we will present to you the second half of the year budget amendments. And we do this to make sure that we stay within our budget means as required by the
And for new council members, we're only working on the expense side of the budget, right? So for instance, like the city pool project, we've got on there a couple of times, but we also got a state grant for some of it. The state grant isn't going to show up here, just the expenditure for the pool is going to show up here. So in many instances, we're just looking at expense items that might have a corresponding other revenue that we didn't know about when we started this.
Yeah, there are a few revenue updates as well, that the expenditure, the expenditure amendments are what we have to legally do. Revenue, we don't necessarily have to update the revenues, but when we've got a real clear one-to-one revenue to expense, then we will put it in this ordinance as well. So you will see a few things on the revenue column.
All right. And the Finance Committee looked at this and approved it earlier today?
Well, Mayor, we kind of proved this throughout this last six months, right?
Yeah, the Finance Committee has, yeah.
Yeah, on the list of budget amendments, you can see the date that the Finance Committee discussed and approved.
All right, and this is one that will need a... All right, and this is one that will need a majority of the council plus one, so if there's any questions for Brad. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2022-11, amending the 2022 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2021-30, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for, entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt ordinance 2022-11, amending the 2022 budget as adopted by ordinance number 2021-30, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for, entering findings that this ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, six in favors, zero against. Thanks, Brad.
I'd have to work with the city attorney on making a shorter motion for that.
Okay, yeah, well. Mr. Loane, 2022 pavement preservation project 2110. How are you today?
I have an addition to the report that was in the comments.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's perfect. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good tabs.
So, thank you, council. I'm here to ask that the city council would award the contract for our 2022 pavement preservation project to our low bidder of Central Paving. We put out just a little bit of background on the project. We came to you back in March, right, as we were starting to see the rising bid prices across the board, but it's still pretty early in the season. We were looking at cutting several segments out of the project. You guys elected to transfer an additional $1 million to the project to keep those, so we continued on, did design. Prices did go, continued to rise as more bids started coming in between March and May when we issued the bids. Our consultant we hired, I think, did a great job of tracking prices, and so we put out the project with a base bid, so four segments between Maiden, Cherry, Okanagan, and then Arondo from Washington up to Mission. Got three bids. The low bid came in about five, a little less than 5% over the engineer's estimate and the available construction funds, and they included a bid alternate as well for Mission Street, which would add an additional $300,000 approximately. And so, with that, I, just basically bringing those to you, we think those were good bids. They were about 10% less than the second bidder, and then about 40% lower than the third bid, really close to where our engineer's estimate was, so seems to be pretty competitive. We've just seen an increase in oil prices for asphalt, but especially concrete right now in the area, and I think that's kind of across the board, private, public, everybody's seeing a big jump in those. And so, then I just want to offer it up to you. The agenda report in the packet shows a, awarded to the, for the base bid, but if this is something that council thinks is important to continue on and do this additional work on Mission, that was the additional agenda report I put in there to add. And I'll just add one other item about Mission Street there is, there's a really minimal sidewalk work, so it is mostly paving on that, so we are getting a little bit of better bang for the buck on that portion and that additive alternate.
I mentioned this early, but the, when I was at Schlandtugus Transportation Council today, they're, they're looking at four lane going from here to Quincy and some other parts, but everything's coming out like 10%. So, I believe we should put as much money as we can, especially like with this bid, to get, to include Mission Street. I think we're going to run into troubles coming up with money or figuring out where we're getting the money to keep our pavement index high.
Yeah, you were talking about maybe 10% a year.
10% a year.
Increases that that would get significant.
Yeah.
You know, I know we talked about, in Keith, you know, when we did the budget allocation, it was like, okay, let's allocate the budget, let's come back and double check, make sure that these bids aren't way out of control, what's going on with oil prices, where are we at? It appears we have a pretty aggressive bidder. I don't know anymore than the rest of you about what oil prices are going to be next year, but I think I'm hard pressed to say, well, let's just not do this and roll it all into next year, when I think if it's 10% higher, we're at 3.6 million or something. And so, the Public Works Committee talked about it on Tuesday, and I think they felt inclined to move with the larger number. Finance Committee looked at it today and felt inclined to do the, do the additive and do the 3.4 million, which is why I asked Jacob to go ahead and give us a presentate or a proposed motion if, if the council thought that that was the right way to go.
It's a tough pill to swallow, and you're right, we don't know what's going to happen. You know, as I read through this, this week, I just kept wondering, is this the time to do more crack sealing and, and put this off? And I still don't know the right answer, so I think we've got to trust our professionals, but man, it's, this could get really rough in the next few years if oil prices continue to increase.
And most of this is the dig and go over the top, right?
Yeah, this project will be a two-inch overlay, so grind, and then most of the streets, grind just the edges, and then add that additional two inches of structures. So, this, you know, as a difference between this and the one we did two years ago, this is a thicker lift, because, I mean, you look at the streets on here, a lot more traffic. Some of these had a pretty substandard section to begin with, which is why our consultant after doing the Geotech report suggested a little bit extra depth.
All right. Any questions for Jake? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to award the contract for the construction of the 2022 pavement preservation project 2110 to Central Paving in the amount of $3,418,372.91, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogan Estatine, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to award the contract for construction of the 2022 pavement preservation project 2110 to Central Paving in the amount of $3,418,372.91, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Any discussion?
Just more of a statement, it's painful to pay for this, but it's important to keep our city moving, and this is part of that process. I don't think it's getting any cheaper. Delaying it, I don't think's the right answer. It's painful to do it, but I think we have to.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jake. Appreciate it. All right. Mayor's report. Laura, what are we talking about today?
I just wanted to provide the city council with an update on the environmental assessment. So, as many of you know, we've been working with the PUD for quite some time, specific to the Section 4F process, which is, relates to the land that the PUD owns that we would need to acquire for the project along Confluence State Park. As part of that, they opted to, sorry, as part of that, they opted to hire an additional noise consultant to sort of validate some of the findings that we had done. I listened into the commissioner meeting on Monday, and it was really positive. I think that the consultant that they hired was able to not only validate Michael Miner's great work, but also really provided them kind of that additional education and some more kind of information on the questions that they had been asking, and so that was really good. I believe Commissioner Randy Smith even said, you know, he's really reassured that we are protecting the natural areas, and so just want to put that out in terms of, again, validating Michael Miner's great work that he's done for us in the noise study, and then hoping that this will be an opportunity for the PUD to, to look at the rest of the work that we've done, and that we've taken that same thoughtful, context-sensitive approach with all of the other aspects of the project. But that's been, I think that was a real big milestone with, again, getting all those positive comments and that really good feedback from the noise consultant and the PUD. The only other thing I have was, next week, we have a work session that's scheduled. I have one item on the calendar, and so that's an update for our Valley, our future. It would probably only take about 15 minutes, so if, if the council would like to consider canceling next week's meeting, we could always tack that on to another meeting similar to what we did today with the various presentations, so that's up for consideration.
So moved.
I actually won't be able to make it next week, so I'm, I'm in favor of...
Okay, let's just go ahead and add it to the, to the 23rd.
Okay.
Perfect. I'll just got a couple, a couple of quick updates. We continue to have discussions with the America Performing Arts Center regarding our improvements to the convention center and whether they want to be participatory in that, so those conversations are ongoing. Steve met with their legal team, so that has gone well. I did meet with the, you know, one of the ones you saw yesterday or earlier was improvements to the museum. They're in the process of about a $20 million, somewhere between 20 and 30 million is their current cost estimate, so they're asking for city participation. I'll meet with Brad and, and some of our finance team and come to you with a proposal. It would be something over a number of years, I'm guessing somewhere, and could be as much as a $2 million commitment. They're thinking two from us, two from the county's ARP funding, four from the state, gets them to eight, and that's sort of a starting point to getting to 20 to 13 million. So, again, it is our building, some of the improvements they're asking for are improvements that we're probably going to have to do anyhow, including some new windows and some things that older buildings have to do anyhow. So, good and bad about owning buildings, one, we program them, two, they're damn expensive to maintain, and that museum is one of those buildings that's... So, I just wanted you to know, we're meeting with them. We'll get something back to you, obviously, and for your approval at some point as, as we go through all of that. Laura, what else is on my list of stuff? We did, did meet with Salvation Army, had a nice meeting with them, so I think something will move along on the shelter items hopefully in the next, next little bit, so that was a, that was positive. What else am I missing, Laura?
The Riverfront Park Planning Committee, or sort of process, started this week, so Green Works is in town, I believe, today and tomorrow, and they're meeting with, doing a bunch of sidewalks, and so that first phase of that work is starting, so that's pretty, pretty exciting.
Rob's team has been doing a lot of work on the flooding from the two canyons that happened to the city limits, so I know Jessica and Rob and the team and public works folks have been up cleaning up a bunch of that, and and of course, your chief of police has had a long month or so, so when you see him sometime, give him a little pat on the shoulder, and all that's going to be fine, it's just, it is a tough, tough month or so.
So, is he down three or four officers?
I can't comment, I'll tell you offline.
Okay. I just, I was just worried that he was running out of...
Yeah, yeah, we'll talk offline.
Active people.
Yeah. And you really, we kind of glossed over it last council meeting. Chief Crown had presented us with the coins emblematic of his election to the presidency of Washington State Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. It's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
Yeah, and so I just want to make sure that we kind of have that on our record someplace. It is a big deal.
It's a big deal.
It's a big honor for him and for us.
And for our region, for Eastern Washington, to have Eastern Washington represented with everything that's going on, and our, we're lucky to have him as our chief, so.
Yes.
Any council members?
We talked about the regional bicycle plan.
Okay.
Got me all excited.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a lot of positive things that happen.
Yeah. And I will tell you, Keith, because you mentioned this to me, we, the Finance Committee didn't talk about it, I don't know why we didn't, but the Public Works Committee did talk about the bird scooters a little bit. I think we're going to add another couple of weeks before we come back. We told the PUD we'd go a month or so, so I think we're all getting, you know, we see what's sort of going on. I think there's some positive feedbacks, there's some concerns about speed and helmets and sidewalks, but we thought we'd give it a couple more weeks and probably bring it back maybe at the meeting on the 23rd.
Have they implemented their rules that...
So, the geocaching is, obviously, they can't go to East One Anchee, but One Anchee is still wide open, and we haven't asked them to shrink that down yet. We did talk about the Public Works, and I think Travis's comment was, don't let them go, and they find them, and you can sort of, you can take your app and say, here it is, and they'll go get it, or they'll see them online, so it's just some interesting conversation back and forth. We obviously see some folks that aren't 18, driving them, right? You've seen them, I've seen them.
Yeah, I saw one on the way here that looked like he was about 12 or 14 tops.
As parents, as parents.
As far as people picking them up, I noticed Tony in the back there, he's the guy.
Yeah. Hi, Tony. I didn't recognize you back there.
Yeah, I had a good conversation with Tony, and he, he's all about working, you know, with the city to like, you know, keep it going and making it safe.
So, I thought we'd do, just give it another couple of weeks, and let's come back and talk about it, and if we think we need to geocash a little bit or bring, or geofence it in a little bit, we can talk about it, but I think overall, more positive than negatives, and it's just weird to see them sometimes in different spots, but Tony and his team, come on up, Tony. Yeah, Tony and his team do a nice job of picking them up and...
So, I'm one of the two guys who actually are the lead managers for One Anchee, and I personally pick up the loose scooters. So, I kind of want to be part of the geofencing that they have, because I've already had to go to the south end where the dog park is.
Yeah.
To go almost in the limit to take one out.
Right.
Wasn't because of the riders, because somebody who doesn't like it decided to just chuck it out.
Yeah.
But I do want to be a part of it. I want to be part of something new that's coming to town, something that is lovable by everybody, but not everybody likes it.
Kind of like Mike Poyer.
And, and you know, they're...
Loveable by everybody, but not everybody likes you.
He just has to ride one, he has to ride it.
You haven't ridden one yet?
Uh-uh.
Oh, come on.
What's the problem, Mike?
Yeah. Well, thanks, Tony, for being here. We'll be in touch, and if we have any sort of in-depth conversations, we'll have them with you and your team.
Okay.
I just have one question, if you can answer, is how the parking works, because that, that's the other concern I hear is, I have pictures that somebody sent me, they're actually parked right in the middle of a crosswalk entrance.
Yeah.
And I thought there was supposed to be some way...
It all depends on the person. So, you're going to have somebody who parks it. I picked some up off of One Anchee, and was in Palouse yesterday, and there was five of them right in the crosswalk.
Yeah, that's, that's a picture I got.
But the big one is, it could be where you leave it down, and somebody's now moving it, putting it here, taking a picture, because I actually had to pick up two that were parked on a sidewalk in a residential area, and the person came out, I don't know where this came from, like this is part of the whole scooters. I sign out of it, I walk away, and this is where I left it.
So, I mean, when you sign out, you're supposed to take a picture of where you parked. Is there any way to, is there a database where you can look at the pictures? You, I mean, you have numbers for specific scooters to see if it actually was moved by...
Yeah, there is, there is ways, because all that data gets saved.
Yeah.
Either Travis, or Taylor, or myself, or Anthony, the other three, might have access to it, and can show, hey, this is where the scooter was. And the cool part is that after the ride is done, the GPS, if it does get moved, I get an email. So, it could be 2:00 in the morning, I get emails of scooters being moved.
I wonder why you look like you haven't slept in a while.
Yeah. I've been running around for the last three days.
Your hair is like straight up. It's like, dude!
Two businesses, a full-time job, and I play football for the state.
Yeah.
So, for me, this is, people my age younger, they don't like to work, for me, this is an opportunity for something new and bigger.
Yeah.
Because there is talks about East One Anchee. Right now, part of the geofence is on the walking bridge.
Yeah.
Which I believe should be cut back, because you're going to park the scooter there, either one of two things, either you're just trying to do some, either something, or I still have them where they go across, but they slow down, they get told to come back into the fence.
Yeah.
This is something, something cool, something fun, something new.
Yeah.
I just wanted to come in and actually be seen as a person who's actually the local guy behind the bird scooters.
And we've met when I rode with Tony Williams and so, yeah. You guys are doing a great job, appreciate everything you're doing. We'll keep working together.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, son.
Thank you. All right. Any else from the good of the order? If not, we'll see you in two weeks.
You must.